Please rise and jump in for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the five United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all. If everybody could remain standing for a moment. I just want to take a moment of silence. The past week, this town lost a piece of its soul in Dottie Yaden. I'd love us to take a moment of silence. Thank you. Anyone from the board would like to say anything about Dottie? I know her relationships have run long and deep. Just go ahead and do so. Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I grew up at sixteen Heritage Way and Dottie was at fifteen Heritage Way. And she was a wonderful, amazing lady, as everyone knew. She was like a second mom to all of us in the neighborhood. And it was just a huge loss. Always been so supportive of all the kids and all the sports teams in town. And I used to love it because on Halloween, Dottie would give a full-size candy bar. So I always think she was an angel brought to us. And it's just a huge loss for the town. I want to share my condolences with the Yaden family. It's just a huge loss. I'm very sad over it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Anybody else have to say anything?
Um, along with Mike said, Dottie was hot in solo Burlington. She loved this town and this town loved her and will always love her. She just had such a deep reach into the community, not only the kids, but the grownups. She was just, I don't think I've ever not seen her smiling or laughing. She was just a beacon in this town and will be sadly missed.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Just real quickly, I don't think there's an act of me out there that can represent Dottie Yaden for what she's done for this town, this community. Whether it was this board, a selectman, the previous boards for the past twenty years, there's nothing out there that we can say or do that's going to make that family feel any better for a woman that actually touched this town in a thousand ways over every minute. So my blessing goes out to Dottie and her family. And I know there's a million kids, sports teams, baseball, cheerleading, Pup Warner. There isn't one place in this town that she doesn't represent everything this town is about. So thank you, Dottie.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Echo everybody's comments regarding Dottie. Many of you probably recall she was the recipient of our outstanding Citizen Award in Fourth of July programs, just a couple of short years ago. So a wonderful woman, a wonderful family, certainly be missed.
While we're on the topic of talking about the community, you can see that we're all wearing a shirt this evening. Liam, if you wouldn't mind letting everybody know why we're wearing this shirt?
Jen Ryan, one of our employees, was recently diagnosed with breast cancer. So we started a campaign to help her family. We did spread the word to some of you guys. If anyone wants to contribute, feel free to reach out to me. There is also a fundraiser, January seventh, at the Boracca Elks. Some other people in town are also doing to help with her fight.
So two very different stories, but I think both echoing the fabric of this community and both that I very much wanted to highlight this evening. All right, moving on to six ninety-nine. We have citizens time. Anybody in the room who would like to come forward and speak? Okay, anybody online, just going to go ahead and raise your hand and let us know. We can take you off mute. Okay, all right, moving right along. Item number seven hundred, we've got some recognition. Are we taking DPW first?
Yes. Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it was suggested, you know, recently we became aware, well, not so recently, but we have two retirements of long-term employees coming up. And the first one is our DPW Central Maintenance Superintendent, George Tommy Lee. And I'll just start it off, Mr. Chairman, by saying that, you know, I've been fortunate to work with Tommy over the past seventeen years or so. And he's always a pleasure to work with. He always has a smile on his face. He has respect to the people that he is in charge of, and the department does a tremendous job. He's going to be a difficult one to replace. Some of the accomplishments that I've seen him have over the years. Tommy was responsible for equipping the new facility to handle all town vehicles, fire trucks, police department, as well as school department vehicles. Under his leadership, he created a ten-year vehicle and equipment replacement plan that was finally based upon the proper longevity and repair costs. So that's been extremely beneficial to us in budgeting over the years. And, you know, despite the fact that the number of vehicles and equipments that they service over the years has increased dramatically, he's been able to keep the headcount of the department at the same level it's been for years. So that's definitely a credit to his leadership. And, you know, I think the board wanted to bring him here to recognize him here tonight. And I'm not sure if Brian from DPW is here and has a few words you'd like to say as well?
Good evening. So unfortunately, I won't be able to work with Tommy for that long too closely. But I have known him for quite some time. Truly a true professional. You won't find a harder worker. You know, great leader. You could always count on him. He's always there when you need him. And, you know, a great leader for all the young guys. So while I, you know, I unfortunately won't get to work with him long, I do wish him luck and, you know, I hope he enjoys the next part of his career. John Sanchez, also retiring DPW director, has worked with him for quite some time. And he wanted me to share a quick speech that he had put together. So I'll start. First of all, please allow me to apologize for not being able to be here tonight, as I would have liked to say these words in person. There are many good things that will be said about Tommy today and in the future, so it is difficult not to sound repetitive. But what else could be said about Tom and what he represents, other than a great career in the service of the town of Burlington? Tommy started with the town's Department of Public Works in nineteen eighty-seven as a heavy motor equipment operator and will leave in a few weeks as Superintendent of Central Maintenance. When I met Tommy in two thousand and six, he was starting in the cemetery division following seven years of work for the fire department as the emergency vehicle repair technician. Working with Paul Caldwell and Rich Reed was no small task. But he was not only able to survive that duo, but to thrive and show his outstanding work ethic. When the Central Maintenance Superintendent position opened up in two thousand and eleven, it was an easy choice for me to make. It is worth noticing that Tommy was the first superintendent appointed during my tenure in Burlington. Although working in very difficult conditions at the old repair facility, Tommy took the job very seriously and decided to improve all aspects of the operation, from the creation of a maintenance schedule for all town vehicles and equipment to the implementation of a vehicle replacement plan. Tommy will retire, leaving behind a fleet, which is the envy of towns around us. I am happy he had the opportunity to see a new central maintenance facility built as he was instrumental in the design process and outfitting of the new maintenance garage. But his dedication did not end there. When we spoke in two thousand and twenty-one about his retirement, which he had planned for the summer of two thousand and twenty-two, I asked him if he could stay through the end of the calendar year, so all winter equipment preparations would be complete prior to the new person taking over this division. Note that for the DPW, winter starts in the summer. Plows need to get repaired, sanders need to be inspected and repaired, and trucks and equipment need to be made ready for the upcoming season. Without hesitation, Tommy agreed to stay longer so that the department could be left ready for winter operations upon his departure. To Lorraine, Tommy Junior, and Josh, I would like to thank you for sharing Tommy with us all these years. I'm sure there were plenty of missed meals, missed games, missed wrestling matches, when he had to come back to Burlington to attend to emergencies. To Tommy, thank you for thirty-five years of dedicated service to the town and for your support and friendship. Signed, John Sanchez.
That was very nice. Thank you, Brian, for reading that. Thank you for your words. We'll take some comments from the board. Mike, you want to go?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me, first of all, say I'm slightly surprised that Tom's actually here in attendance with us tonight. I don't think he came willingly. He's kind of a fairly modest guy in this type of setting. It's not the case when he's turning wrenches and so forth. I'm always pleased to recognize our DPW employees. You know, they don't get the attention or the front-page headlines often enough. You know, our police and fire usually out there and get reported on frequently. And, you know, DPW just doesn't get that same attention. But you're equally as important to this town for the work you do. So I just want to say, Tom, thanks very much for thirty-five years of service to the town and thank you for being a friend to not only me, but my entire family. So I wish you well in your retirement. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Tom. Where do I start? Do I start with the, when you used to come in the barber shop years ago? We see each other almost every day at one stop. Do I start with the great attribute you did to the new facility we have? The list can go on and on. You've been an absolute asset to this town. I personally have never heard a bad thing about you, knowing you practically hold adult lives together. How could you get a better person? How could you? I wish you all the best in retirement. I hope that you go up there, ride those four-wheelers and do anything you want to do up there in that North Country of Maine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a pleasure working with Tommy over the years as a town employee. But I always looked, when I talked to him, he was always forward-thinking. In other words, I wasn't thinking about today, he's thinking about the future, like, oh, we're going to do this, or we're looking at this. Always, you know, that forward-thinking for the town and for the DPW. And under Tommy, Tommy and his crew, our vehicles have a lifespan, so to speak. They're only functional for so many years, but somehow they got, if a vehicle was to be retired after ten years, somehow they always got like another year or two out of those vehicles. And that was a huge, that's a huge asset to this town, to the town, to be able to get more out of a vehicle than it's expected. And we're talking, you know, snowplow, I mean, look at last night, to what Mike said about the recognition. We had a snowstorm. You guys had to come out and clean up the town. But Tommy, trust me, you're going to enjoy your retirement. It's a great place to be and thank you for thirty-five years of service.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Tommy, for your many years of service and congratulations on your retirement. And thank you for everything you did to make Burlington a better place. Much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On behalf of the board, I just want to say that, well, first off, if I start calling what happened last night a snowstorm like Jim does, then we got a bigger problem.
No, it arose.
It made it dusting.
A lot of storm, but...
No, but in all seriousness, you know, we sit here and we say that you gave us thirty-five years of your life to work for this town, right? But this town wouldn't be where it is without you and people like you working in this town, right? And to Mike's point, residents take advantage and don't understand what it is that you do every day, right? They only see what touches them the most, police, fire, trash, right? God, why isn't my trash getting picked up, right? They're not looking at all the things that each and every one of you does behind the scenes and what you continually do for five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five years, right? A simple thank you is never going to be enough. But on behalf of the twenty-seven-plus-thousand residents of the town of Burlington, on behalf of this board, please understand that we truly mean it when we say thank you for everything that you've ever done on behalf of this town. It means the world to us. Thank you. So...
Catch you out in the water this summer.
If he wants to, I don't want to put any pressure on.
Tom, you want a pitcher? Your family?
I didn't want to put undue pressure on.
Guys, can I get in?
Give him his family and then he can jump in. Yeah, I will. I love that. All right, next up, we have recognition of our fire chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As everybody is aware, you know, we are also replacing another longtime dedicated employee, our fire chief, Michael Patterson, another employee I've had the opportunity to work with for over seventeen years. We really started working more closely when he became Assistant Chief. And what can I say? He's a firefighter through and through, who's always dedicated to his men. And I'll always remember all the work that he did to assist us in getting Fire Station Two moved forward, as well as assisted us with the creation and implementation of the ALS program, paramedic program, which, as we're all aware, has been a huge success for the town. So Mike's a great guy. He's become a friend over the years. And I'm very sorry to see him go as the fire chief, but I'm also very happy for him personally and his wife Debbie will get to spend more time together. And I'm very grateful to have known him over the years. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Since you are currently the chief and we can't turn to anybody to say, oh, we can speak about you, the board will do that. So Mike, I don't know if you want to start again?
Sure. Yeah, you know, obviously, I spent my entire career at the fire department, working alongside Mike, watched him go, you know, rise through the ranks to where he is today, got to know his wife Debbie and his boys quite well over the years. And Paul mentioned, I guess, a couple of highlights toward the end of my career was those, exactly those two things, getting that Station Two completed and implementing the ALS program over there. I mean, the town is so much better off. It's a superior level of service and the amount of time that you put into that has really paid off. We've gotten some really quality employees over there since we implemented that. And that's in no small part to the amount of work that you did. So thank you very much for all of your service to the town. And I wish you a very happy and healthy and enjoyable retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Absolutely. Do you want to go next?
Sure, thank you. Mike, what can we say? It just seems like two years ago, we appointed you to that position and you're already going out. So wish you all the best on that squad. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things we could all say of all the great things you've done in the past couple of years prior to you even becoming the chief. Your friendship has been great with the town. All of us, all the board here, respect you as a chief. As you can see in the back, it shows between the lieutenants and captains that are here and the firefighters that are out in the hallway, shows a great support for you. So good luck on your retirement and all the best here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike and I go way back. You may not remember this, but I first met Mike when we had the old police-fire golf tournaments many, many years ago. And that's when I first met Mike. And Mike, I had never golfed before. So Michael said he was going to show me how to golf. You have many years of accomplishments and successes throughout your career, but you failed at that one because they still stink at golf. No, in all honesty...
So do I.
Thank you for your years of service. And again, all your successes, thank you for all that you did with ALS, all you do for Station Two. You've really made the fire department better today than it had been in the past because of all your accomplishments. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mike, for all your service to the town and your dedication. And on a personal note, thank you for helping me out, get up to speed. When I was during the campaign, we sat down and met and you brought me up to speed on all the inner workings of Burlington Fire and got me up to speed to learn a lot of the processes and how things work. So I appreciate that and that helps. So congratulations and enjoy your retirement.
You know, I know everyone looks forward to their retirement, but as a board, we are bummed out by it because we have to replace good people. I know that you're very lucky in Burlington that, you know, we work very hard to have good people waiting behind you to promote, right? And that's, I think, in part what makes Burlington so great, you know, is that we work a lot from within to make sure that the people who are here, right, get that next job and keep doing great work and teach those next to them, beside them, to, you know, do great work as well. I don't know about you, but I wasn't expecting a pandemic when we appointed you. That was a lot of fun. You know, so on top of everything else, thank you for being the fire chief and managing everyone through that. It wasn't easy for any of us, but everything you did, every thought you brought to the table, you know, helped us navigate that. And that's on top of everything else, right? Fire Two, the ALS, I mean, you know, we just got done talking about Tommy Lee and, I mean, it takes a lot of forward-thinking to make sure that we're prepared for the best and worst-case scenarios and to have level-headed, you know, common sense thinking when those things do arise. So thank you for everything. It's been a pleasure knowing you. Not that I think that we're going to stop knowing each other, but thank you for everything, chief, truly. Anything else? Anybody else want to say something on behalf of the chief before I start clapping for this man? Eddie? Come on down.
Good evening. You guys have said a lot about what he's done, you know, thirty-three-plus years in the fire service. It's not easy. The higher you get in rank, the less easy it is, the more responsibility, the more headaches, the more sleepless nights. It's not just a day job. It's twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. So I was fortunate enough to follow, kind of follow in his footsteps. He was the first full-time training captain that we've had. And he flipped the switch on us taking, well, not taking it seriously, but having more opportunity to train. Then he rose to the rank of Assistant Chief, Assisted Chief Yetman in numerous ways over his tenure. And then, of course, became chief. Became chief right at the start of COVID. All the while, still running, starting and getting the ALS program going. So... And he's been a great mentor, not only as my, you know, as I'm the Assistant Chief, but when he was the Assistant Chief and I was the Training Captain. He truly cares about the guys and, you know, those are what, you know, our internal customers, you know? We deliver service to the public, but we best deliver it by having our guys trained, prepared. But he also wants them protected and to be safe. And I know that's, when he was named chief, that was one of the things he said, you know, he just wants our guys to be safe. So chief, Mike, congratulations. Debbie, congratulations, you got him back. Thank you for all the years of loaning him to us. So congratulations.
Enjoy your free time.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Liam, it's all right. What if he's just going to haul off a hit? Too many cheers in here.
Anyone else, chief?
Even on the way out, chief.
Schedule time, we're going to have to take some more. Selfies? All right. Moving right along, seven oh one. We've got a couple appointments for the fire department. Andy, you coming down for this? Come on.
Just going to say...
Let's do it.
Which one are you doing first?
Ed.
Okay. Tonight, we are putting forward the name of Edgar McLean to be a limited, what do we call it? Limited assignment firefighter. A lot of our guys, when they retire, just like the police, continue to do details. And this allows them to stay with the department for a little bit longer and also, you know, pass on, continue to pass on their knowledge and help us out when we're in need. And, you know, who else has the most knowledge here about the fire department than Ed, you know, and the chief? Ed also did thirty-three-plus years in the fire department. Longtime union representative. Longtime union representative, rose through the ranks in the union to become our president. A very well-respected man in the professional firefighters and the International Association of Firefighters, professional firefighters in Massachusetts. Gives me great pleasure to recommend Ed McLean to be a limited.
Assignment.
Assignment firefighter. I'll get it right the next time.
No, thank you, chief. And if I can, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, I know Ed doesn't want to be up here, but I just want to thank him for his years of service as the president of the union. We had a lot of, John and I had a lot of difficult conversations with the union and he was always an utmost professional and he was always worked to solve problems, not create problems. And I'm grateful to him for that. And the board should also be aware that he was a key contributor to the town's health insurance program over the years. You won't find anyone around who knows more about it than him. And another big loss for the town in losing Ed at the same time here. And I'm honored tonight to make the appointment with the chief's recommendation. I appoint Edgar McLean to the position of Limited Assignment Firefighter in the Burlington Fire Department and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
Still moved? Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Five, zero, zero. All right, moving right along. Floor is yours.
Okay, so with the retirement of Chief Patterson and me taking over as chief come January, we now have a vacancy in the Assistant Chief's position. I'm happy to bring before you the name of Captain Stephen McLean as the Assistant, the next Assistant Fire Chief. We, we put out a notice of the vacancy. We had four applicants. And we did interviews. We looked at the, or I looked at their personnel record and, and, you know, their resumes. And I'll tell you, it was the, pretty much the most difficult thing that I had to do and I'm not even the chief yet. All four of these, those guys and even, you know, many of our lieutenants and other captains could take over that position. So it was, it was a difficult choice, but I had to make a decision and Steve McLean is who I came up with. He's been a fire captain for three years, lieutenant for eighteen years, four of those as the fire prevention lieutenant, firefighter for nine. He was a, he's a trained fire officer one and fire officer two. He had, one of the earlier recipients of a bachelor of science degree in emergency management from Riviera University, along with an associate's from, in fire science from Middlesex Community College. He's a building construction supervisor. That's very important for us. I mean, building construction and, and how fire works with, in a building is important to know. And he's gonna bring that knowledge. He's a resident of Burlington, graduate of Burlington High School. He and his wife Lisa raised their kids here, Ashley and Steve. He's also been a volunteer in youth sports in Burlington. He's a high-quality fire officer and an excellent choice to be the next Assistant Chief.
Thank you, Andy. With the chief's recommendation, I appoint Stephen McLean to the position of Assistant Fire Chief in the Burlington Fire Department and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
Still moved? Second. Okay, they're moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Five, zero, zero. Congratulations, right? Congratulations, chief. Oh, yeah. Don't forget the pictures. We'll go anywhere. Turn around the picture. This is a whole lot of pictures.
Do you want me to take them with you or phone?
Okay. Should we get the signal? We're going, we're going. Watch out for regulations.
Shall we make sure we can see you in that?
That's okay.
I just don't have a big deal.
You gotta tie your sneaker before you fall.
What's the, um?
I think you got a trip on that.
Wendy's, Mike's.
Had to clear out. Amy, I knew you were out there. Right up, ready to go. We'll give the room a hot second to clear out, please. Come on up, grab a seat. What's the matter, Jamie Cole? Yeah. It's a weight loss. How it feels?
Yeah, can see low. Maybe that's better.
Bye, Mr. Mills.
That's what they try to do.
All right, we'll call that cleared out enough. Moving on to 702. We've got early voting slash vote by mail for 2023. Amy Warfield, a Warrnambool Town Clerk, is joining us. Amy, take it away.
Okay. Well, based on the, the special act or the Act of 2022 in regards to elections, there's two things that have changed and that is dealing with early voting and whether that's in-person early voting or vote by mail. So what I need to have is that tonight you can decide whether you want to, based on my recommendation, do early, we could do early voting in person, kind of like we've been doing, and then vote by mail as well. If you choose to not do vote by mail, we would have to go through a process of opting out of it, which would mean we'd have to have a public hearing and opt out of it. I mean, vote by mail in person or early voting in person is pretty much what we've always kind of done with absentee in person. So I don't see that as being any, done any differently. In fact, for the town election, we can probably handle it directly out of the office as opposed to having set up a separate site like we do for governor's races or presidential races. And the vote by mail was handled entirely out of my office for the past, for three elections, so I don't see an issue with doing, continuing to do that. I think that the vote by mail will replace the absentees that we have done in the past, which had been by mail. So that is what I'm looking for your approval on.
All right, gentlemen, questions? No? You feel good about this? Or you feel how you want to feel? I'll make the assumption. Amy, how do you feel about it? I know that, that in the past we've talked about balancing access versus, you know, what it takes for the staff to, you know, handle everything during the vote, but what's your take on it?
Well, for the town, it's, it's an entirely different issue. The volume, I mean, it would be nice to get more than 15% of the voters to show up for a town election, but that's pretty much the standard. So vote by mail for the presidential, so in 2024, for the presidential, for governor's races, those kinds of things are a little more taxing. But for the town election, I don't see it being an issue. I think that the pieces are in place for us to assure that a ballot is sent out only to a registered voter and that that ballot comes back from the same registered voter. Early in person is very straightforward. The person has to come in, they have to sign the ballot, the envelope in front of us. So it's all pretty straightforward. It's, you know, it just takes getting a system going.
And is the process to opt out of, of vote by mail a pain?
Sorry?
Is it, is it difficult to opt out?
No. Again, the select board has to have a public hearing and make a determination as to whether they want to opt out or not. Honestly, for a town election, what will then happen is that people would continue to do absentee voting. So they'd mail in an absentee ballot application, we'd send out a ballot to them and we'd get that ballot back, which is really almost the same thing that we do with vote by mail. As well, I have found out that I can put a application in with the census form. We'll put two applications on a sheet in with the census form and then note on the census that if people need more applications, they're on the website, they're available at town offices, that kind of stuff. So it's really almost the same process as we've been doing for years and years with absentees.
Okay. All right. Do you want this as one voter, two?
You can do it as one, I believe, because we're not, unless we're gonna opt out, it takes another process, but.
All right, so gentlemen, if we're, if, if someone's feeling cheeky and wants to take both as a.
I'll, uh, Amy, just want to make sure I get the wording correctly.
Yeah.
To approve this, I'd make a motion to, I'll, I'll give a motion and you tell me if it's not correct.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept Amy's recommendation that we do early in person and vote by mail for the town election in 2023.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Five, zero, zero.
Thank you. And just if you're curious, remember that the town election will be April 1st on Saturday in 2023.
Early. There you go. Thank you, Amy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Next up, 703 with Sculpture Park donation. Do we have somebody?
Don't see Barbara.
She's on.
Is she?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, I think, oh, yeah, there she is.
Yep, yep. Barbara, we'll get you unmuted in a second there.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Hi. Great for taking this agenda item. I'm very excited about it.
Would you like to tell us a little about, about what's, what's going on?
Okay, well, one of the sculptures in the Sculpture Park called Seraph, which is the tall, blue piece that's mostly plexiglass. It was created by an artist out of Weston and we've been talking with this artist and his family for a few months now since it was installed. And he has agreed to donate the piece to the town, which is extremely exciting because it was the most expensive piece. We would never have been able to purchase it ourselves. So it's wonderful news and I want to thank John Denizio and Paul Sagarino because it was kind of a difficult process. It's not something that I'd ever done before. It's also something the sculptor had never done before. So it was, it took a little while, but they, they were very patient with me and everything's been signed off on except for tonight. I understand the select board needs to take a vote to accept the donation.
Okay, Jim, anything to add?
Uh, nothing to add. I'll make a motion. Somebody else has it.
So, yeah, questions for the board? If anybody has any? No? Okay. The other thing I want to say is that, like, I feel like we're now heading down a path where we're starting to accumulate, like, the town is actually accumulating sculptures, right? So we were at a, 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 reaching a tipping point where it was, it was, you know, we're paying, you know, leases for sculptures and we're, and we're, you know, seeing how it goes. Now we've got like, I think, like, three or four sculptures that we, we own as a town. So as, as a, as a thought, as a notion, because the Sculpture Park is not a subcommittee of this yet, but a planning, we should in the new year discuss what the longer-term plans of the park is going to be or, you know, where sculptures can reside. Because if people are gonna continue donating sculptures and I, I don't want to start saying no to everybody. I mean, it's not the kind of, so they're hard that they're, you know, donating their work of art, but if we have no place for it to go or it doesn't fit with, you know, what we're kind of hoping for, for the long term, then we need to know that, you know, before we kind of get into it. So, I mean, I'm fine with accepting this one, you know, in that we, we wanted a handful of these so far, but I'm just putting it out there that, you know, I think this board would very much be in favor, Barbara, of having that conversation with the Sculpture Bar Committee and, and planning moving forward. I saw, I saw her hand go up. I just wanted to make.
You would be very happy to have that conversation. I did present a long-range plan to the select board several months ago. That hasn't changed dramatically, but we have, as you said, acquired some new sculptures, so it probably is a good time to sit down, perhaps in January or February, and have that discussion. I would be very pleased to do that.
Excellent, yeah. In the, in the grand scheme of, of priority ball juggling, right? I think that we, we de-prioritize Sculpture Park with the weather and other larger things. And I think that as we head into 2023, we should definitely pick it back up and, and make it a priority to resolve before we wind up with, you know, ten sculptures and no place to put them.
Is that something that you would like to create a subcommittee of the select board for or do you want me to come and present to the entire board?
Let's, let's circle back, maybe myself, Jim, and you can talk about it offline in a, in a non-quorum, safe space. We can decide how we want to bring it forward back to the boards.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Barbara. All right. If there's nothing else, I want to give everyone the opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the Sculpture Park donation from Joseph Ferguson and his family.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stain? Five, zero, zero. All right, Barbara, thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays. Thank you. All right, next up, 704, we have a public hearing for a housing proposal of Windview Heights Two. As the proponents would like to come on down as we get set up here, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing now. Just need a motion to approve the notice as advertised.
Still moved? Second.
Okay, motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stain? Thank you. Public hearing is open. Mr. Murphy, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Thomas Murphy. I'm here on behalf of Windview Two, Windview Heights Two LLC. LLC, the audience here, Gary Litchfield and Jack Hussey. And this is with respect to property of Mountain Road. Just by way of background, I know the board's aware, but for anybody who might be listening, 2019, early 2019, the applicants brought forward a proposed, they call it a LIP application that's a local initiative. Whatever.
Program.
Program, a local initiative program. What it is, it's, it's a vehicle whereby, under the, the Affordable Housing Statute of Massachusetts, as the board knows, if a town is less than 10% affordable housing, they're subject to what they call an unfriendly 40B proposal where a developer can come in and pretty much force a project into a town. But towns with in excess of 10%, which Burlington is, can still use that comprehensive permit process to get additional affordable housing or other types of housing if they, they feel it'd be beneficial to the town. So back in 2019, a proposal was brought to the town by the, by the applicants for a 24-unit condominium complex on property at the rear of 35 Mountain Road. As proposed, it was going to be 25% affordable, six of the units would be affordable, and the entire project was going to be age-restricted, which is age 55 or higher. The way that the, the state process works, first the town has to issue a letter of support indicating the town is in favor of it. And then from there, it goes into the state Department of Housing and Community Development. And if they agree that it's a proper LIP application, they will approve. And if they agree that it's a proper LIP application, they will approve it. And then it goes back to the developer to bring it back to the town through a comprehensive permit. And the body that handles that process is the Board of Appeals by statute. And it essentially is a condensed municipal permitting process. So the Board of Appeals essentially stands in for both the Planning Board and the Board of Health and CONCOM and any other bodies or departments in the town, which are usually part of that process. So in any event, back in 2019, the, the town of Burlington, through the Board of Selectmen and the Burlington Housing Partnership, both groups unanimously agreed to support the proposal. An issue was, a, a letter was issued by this board back in, I think it was May of 2019 that was forwarded to the, the state. The state took that, plus all of the other submission, submission materials that my client had to prepare. And eventually, about a year later, in May of 2020, the state, through the DHCD, issued a letter approving the LIP application. So again, it's a long process from there. The client had to proceed with his submission to the Board of Appeals. It took a while to get the engineering, things of that nature done. That application was filed, I believe, in December of 2020, and the public hearing was opened in January of 2021. Shortly after that public hearing was open, this particular project, and I know the board is familiar with the location, but for those who are listening, the frontage is on Mountain Road. In that area, there's a significant elevation increase from Mountain Road back up the hill. This particular project would be towards the top of the hill, and initially, as designed, access was going to be through Richardson Road, which comes off of Harriet Ave, which is going up the street past the Sullivan Funeral Home and take a left. That was the proposed means of access. It was going to be along Richardson Road, across the property of Windview Condominiums, which were constructed about 20 years ago. And then the parcel where this property is going to be developed is just beyond that. Mr. Litchfield was the developer initially of the Wind, the Windview Condominiums. And at the time, they attempted to, because he had this in mind, you know, going forward, at the time, they, they attempted to reserve all the necessary permits, approvals, easements, rights of way, whatever, to, to get from Harriet Ave into the proposed construction site. As we opened the public hearing back in January of 2021, some questions were raised about whether that was sufficiently done. So the whole process kind of came to a screeching halt. Well, everybody kind of looked into, at least, well, we looked into that issue, had some other people look into it for us, had some discussions back and forth. At some point, it became clear there wasn't going to be a resolution on that. So the comprehensive permit application was withdrawn without prejudice with the agreement of the, the chairman of the, of the Board of Appeals, so that the applicants could kind of review their situation, try to figure out how they, how they wanted to address this. And the options frankly would try to contest the legitimacy of the, of their access, and that was going to take some sort of a land court action, which takes time and costs money, or explore other means of access, which they chose to do. So they sat down with their engineer. He obviously was familiar with the area, but he, they kind of reviewed different options. And ultimately, they came up with a, a way to access the back lot, or the proposed back lot, it hasn't been divided yet, from Mountain Road. Now, I forwarded a copy of the plan to the town administrator, I assume he circulated. I have a copy here. I didn't see any tripods, so I'm happy to hold it up or whatever. But, but there is essentially a plan that goes from, from Mountain Road, kind of an S. Like I said, there is a, there is a pretty significant increase in elevations going to head up there. So it's not a straight driveway up, it's kind of an S shape, bringing them up to where? Oh, thanks.
Tom, we also have the PDFs that you sent along, we can put on the screen if that...
Oh, yeah, if you could do that, Paul, that, that might be easier.
Now he's got the tripod, that won't stop.
It's on the screen now, Tom.
Oh, okay.
Let the window open, Tom.
The, that's, no, the first page, if I could draw it, if you...
This one.
Yeah. I'm going to put this up so the guys and people in the audience can see.
First page. That's the second.
All right. So in any event, what is on the screen now is the proposed driveway that would go from Mountain Road up to the back of the lot, where the building would ultimately be constructed. As you can see, it starts at, at the far end of the lot at Mountain Road, kind of S's up, and then enters out into the back lot at the top of the hill. So that's the only difference in the proposal from the first application that came before this board back in 2019 and now. The building's going to be the same, 24 units, still 25% affordable, still age-restricted. And the, there's parking under, and there's also overflow parking on, on the surface beside the building, so for, but for the, the different access, everything else is pretty much the same. So in any event, once the engineer put this plan together, I had conversations with the town administrator, because the, the state, my client approached the state, they said his, his LIP approval is still okay, but they asked us just to get something from the town, just confirming that there's still support from the, from the, from the Board of Selectmen. In the meantime, I understand there was a new bylaw passed by town meeting, and I believe it's now in the books, that requires a public hearing anytime somebody is coming before this board for, for this type of letter of support. So that is a long, roundabout way of saying why we're here tonight. This is, we're here looking for the, for the board to reconfirm their support for this project. Now, a couple of things I'd just like to emphasize, as far as that goes. Like I said, the Board of Appeals is the body that handles the permitting and all this. They'll look at the drainage, they'll look at the traffic, they'll look at the parking, they'll look at everything that goes into a site plan approval and special permits to the degree that they're necessary. That's, those hearings where engineers will be present, architects will be present, and all of that type of stuff, that typically goes into a municipal approval process in, in front of different boards, will all be done in front of the Board of Appeals if and when we get to that point. In my opinion, the, the, the board back in 2019 did what the intent of getting the town's support on something like this is, is to state whether or not there is in fact a need in the town for the type of housing that's proposed in the project. And specifically, again, because the town of Burlington is over 10%, so we can't force a 40B onto the, it requires the town to be, you know, not only in favor, but willing to be, you know, to cooperate in the project going forward. So in any event, findings were issued, or not findings, but reasons were given by the board in their letter of 2019 as to the benefits that would, would be derived to the town from this project. And they included things such as, you know, additional affordable housing, and the, the reasons why that is a, is a good thing, that diversity, housing stock, things of that nature. Those are obviously still present here. And in addition, I would suggest that the, the fact that this is an age-restricted project also meets the need of the town, which is essentially one of the things, and it was in the 2022 housing report that I think was just issued to this board recently from the Housing Partnership. They specifically mentioned that seniors in particular don't really have much opportunity to, to, to age in place here in town. They, they, they get to a point where they don't want to maintain a single-family house and the landscaping and things that go, go with that, but there really aren't many other options here in this town. So that was a specific need that was, that was noticed, noted in that report, and I would suggest that this directly addresses that need. The typical person who will buy one of these units, what they call the empty nesters, you know, a single-family, kids are up and out, they're done with school, and now the, the mother and father, husband and wife are getting older and they're sick of cutting the grass and shoveling snow. So they sell the house in Burlington and they can use the, the proceeds from that to purchase one of these condominiums. So that is essentially the target audience here, and that's who I think you'll find will be making use of these, in addition to getting six affordable units on, to increase the, the town stock. So from a perspective, I would submit of this board of trying, of determining whether or not this type of housing is still appropriate and is still needed and still fits a need in the town of Burlington, I would suggest that it clearly is. And it's, I would also submit to the board that that's what this board should be looking at in terms of deciding whether or not to support this project. Questions about drainage and questions about parking and traffic and everything else that goes into it, that will be taken up by the Board of Appeals when it gets to that point. And all of those issues will be looked at carefully. There'll be peer reports, there'll be engineers, there'll be architects, there'll be all sorts of people looking at all those type of information. So, Mr. Chairman, in a nutshell, what we're here for is a request that the town, through the Board of Selectmen, vote that it's, it continues to support this LIP project, that it does in fact meet housing needs in the town of Burlington, the town of Burlington will derive benefits from this project. And with that vote, we can go back to the DHCD and get their approval to, to move forward with a comprehensive permit, and then we'll be before the, before the Board of Appeals and, and the meat and potatoes of the project will come out at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So as a reminder, the board will not be taking a vote this evening. That will happen on January 9th at our next meeting. It's a two-parter, so stay tuned. The goal of this evening really is for the public hearing, and then we will discuss, we may discuss this evening, but we, we will do a primary discussion at the meeting on the 9th, followed by a vote. I also want to remind anyone who'd like to speak during public hearing, just remember that any specific zoning issues, I mean, you can take a minute to talk about them, but the primary goal of this board in our decision is looking at the validity of the project from an overall perspective of the town. Is it good for the town? Is it good for the community? You know, and so if you have an argument for or against that, we're absolutely happy to hear it. I see a bunch of folks in the room, I see a bunch of folks online, I don't, I don't assume that you're all here for this, but to start, I'm going to set the, the speaking clock at three minutes. And then if, if there's less people, or we move through folks faster, and someone wants to get back up and say something, I'm happy to do that. When you get up to speak, please state your name and where in town you live. If, if you're a resident that is affected by the project, by all means, you know, include that so that we understand, and we can go from there. Okay? I see a hand up online already. I, I feel like I'm going to start with folks in the room, to be honest, because you're here, and then go online. So just bear with me as we kind of work through this. So, start with folks in the room that would like to speak of the public hearing. Go ahead and raise your hand, I'll call on you and we can get the ball rolling. Sir, come on up.
My name is...
Go ahead and grab a seat, because we need you in the microphone.
My name is David Ricks. I live at 26 Mountain Road. I lived in Lexington for over 30 years, moved here a year ago. Since I've been here, I have been thoroughly welcomed by my neighbors. I've got Jim and Steve here, who have just gone above all, all means, a lot more so than Lexington people, to welcome my family into, into Burlington. And we're really enjoying Burlington. It was a surprise to us when we moved on, onto Mountain Road, that the traffic detoured Burlington Street from Wind Street to Burlington Street, and it was pretty heavy traffic there. Our house is protected from that traffic because of the traffic moving, moving to the left onto Burlington Street. There are people that use Mountain Road from Andover, from North Reading, from Reading, people I know personally who are taking shortcuts to places like Lexington Christian Academy and on, on Lowell Street in Lexington, because of the traffic on, on 128 and, and 95. So I, I don't know what, what has been done with respect to looking at traffic. I, I know, sir, you've mentioned the Board of Appeals, but there's a lot of traffic at the moment on that stretch of Mountain Road to Burlington Street, not so much going past our place, but it will increase exponentially with this, with this proposal. So that's the reason why I'm here tonight, for you to consider that.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the room? Yep, come on.
Don Casey, 14 Mountain View Way in Burlington. My biggest concern with this project is the 40B. Most towns shriek when they hear about a 40B. Now, I know that the, that the Board of Selectmen have reached out and solicited this type of development for senior housing, but you're cheatering on a very dangerous topic. 40B, you're setting a precedent here, where other potential sites within a residential community, residential area, zoned R1, RO, could be misused by developers. You can easily say and stay here and say, no, it won't, because we solicited, we have selection rights over 40Bs. That's, that's going to be a tough sell, especially a shop attorney. I've been in real estate for 38 years, commercial and residential, so I've seen both sides of it. I have a big problem with this project because I think it's up in a residential area. The access was originally designed and supported by you as a board off of Richardson Road, which the access to the site was a lot cleaner, a lot more direct, but it affected Richardson Road, Harriet Road, because those roads are very narrow. Now you come up with this plan here, snaking, snaking an easement road into, behind 35 Mountain Road rear, you have a worse access problem. That site is an albatross, and the blasting that's going to be needed there to bring that road in, and all of the houses and all the residential community behind 35R Mountain Road and on Mountain Road, Mountain View, that's going to change that whole dynamic of that neighborhood. And to force a commercial building into a strictly RO residential area is, to me, not right. Part of the town and the boards within the town are there to protect the town of Burlington, its residents, right, and its residential neighborhoods. And this affects that in many ways. A 40B allows the developer to circumvent the Planning Board and many other, and many other boards throughout the town. So it, to me, it's a dangerous proposition, and I think the board really needs to consider that. You're teetering on something that you're opening up a can of worms down the road that could impact the town negatively. This is not the area to put a senior housing, a 55-plus community, whatever you want to call it. This is not the area for that. There are better areas in the town of Burlington for that. Thank you for your time, and I'll be at other hearings as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Steve O'Brien, 29 Mountain Road.
Hi, Tom. The wood blasting cut my ear. 29 Mountain Road, that's me. I'm on ledge. I have gotten water. I've been here 60 years. I've seen it all. The word blasting cut my ear. 29 Mountain Road, that's me. I'm on ledge. I have gotten water. I've been here 60 years. I've seen it all. If there's blasting, it's gonna hit me again. I know it is. They call it Mountain Road because there's a big ledge there, and that's my backyard. When there's blasting, and there was blasting years ago, I got water. It was expensive. Right now, traffic is one issue. My issue is blasting. I would like to see the Board of Selectmen enter my complaints about blasting. This goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry?
Thank you. Sherry Ellis, 3 Hickory Lane in Burlington, also a Town Meeting member. And I've spoken on this project when it came before the board earlier. And I did want to confirm a couple of items, that this proposal is the same application from 2019 through the chair? Is that true?
Mr. Murphy?
I'm not sure what you mean by the same application. This is the, obviously, some of the details are different because of the access, but the nature of the proposal is the same, the size of the proposal is the same.
The actual application that you submitted to the state, is that the same?
It is.
Or have you revised it?
No, no, it's, well, no, it's the same application that went through. This is not a new application as far as the state goes. There will be a new application for comprehensive permit filed with the town of Burlington.
Okay. So the application, the original application, there's a lot of different things that have gone on since then, in that sense. And the original application, there was a letter from the prior assessor, and through the Housing Partnership, supported that, in which case then, some members of this board and other members, former members of the board, supported that. At that time, there was no real public hearing or public comment, period, that was required by the state. And there was no discussion at any Board of Selectmen meeting. So I'm glad that this is coming forward for a public hearing, so that people have the opportunity, the voters have the opportunity, and many other members, whoever wishes to speak on this. I'm all for affordable housing. I've been following the Housing Partnership. There's some new, really active members on that, and I'd really love to hear some discussion at that Housing Partnership Committee. There was never really any published discussions from the former Housing Partnership Committee when this went through. So I'd like to really hear more about that. As far as the senior 55-plus community, I spoke on this before, that this doesn't really appear to be a great place for this, and other people have mentioned that. This is going to be a really steep incline, nice icy roads like we had the other night, and to put seniors at risk in that. It's also not an area that really the town has focused on for housing, dense housing. So I'd really like to see a lot of discussion on this. And I also am aware that someone who can't be here tonight, Patricia O'Brien, had a nice letter to you folks, and I'd like that read into the record if possible. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sherry. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Dawn Campos. I live at 34 Mountain Road, so I'm directly across the street, so this definitely affects a lot. And some of the things I want to bring up, probably go to the appeal deal, I don't know where, who votes on what, but I'm just going to throw them out anyway because they're all concerns. One of my concerns is, like, how does the Select Board vote on something, voting something in, without looking at it? Like, do you go buy a car without looking at it? Like, how do you just say, yeah, we'll approve this, and without even looking and seeing the hill and going, yeah, this doesn't make sense? Does that, is that normal?
Well, so to clarify, what we're voting on is whether or not we think a letter of support should go along with the application to the state for this project. So that's why when we talk about, Mr. Murphy had said, and I know Sherry, you had mentioned it, it's, everything goes to the Zoning Board of Appeal in this case, right? So as opposed to going to the Plan Board and then to other boards, everything's consolidated to the Zoning Board of Appeals, in which case, all due process happens through them as the Board of purview, right? So right now, we're deciding on whether or not this board wants to send a letter of support or not-
Okay.
-to, along with the application to the state, right, as to whether or not this fits the needs of the community, right? Which is why we often hear right now during this discussion whether or not we're at a need for more senior 55-plus, or we want to call it, housing in the community, right? So anything that's zoning-related, while we want to hear and understand your concerns, doesn't really affect us entirely. It affects us some because you're residents and you matter as much as we do, but it's important to note that, like, we aren't stamping anything.
Okay. All right, so, traffic is, to me, is a concern, because there's so much cut-through traffic getting to 128, back to 128, trying to get onto Wind Street. Took me over five minutes just to get out of my street. I mean, it's coming both ways. And then you've got the landscaping tracks that just park everywhere on the road from spring all the way through to the first snowfall. You've got UPS trucks, you've got Amazon trucks. I mean, it's, to put that much there already, now you're going to cut this road up, which there's no way you're going to get, to put a road there without swinging into my yard to go up. I mean, it's just, it's not wide enough to, you've got big construction trucks trying to get in and then cut up and go, it's just not going to make it. The water shortage in Burlington, I can't even wash my car, never mind, you're going to cut into another 24 apartment building with water, but yet, we can't, we don't, we haven't even cut into WMRA or anything yet to use water. I can't even drink the water I have. So it doesn't make sense to me to cut in to the main, which is going to be off of Mountain Road, which, by the way, was just tarred. Now we're going to rip it all up and cut into it, which was a big waste of money. Coming down off that hill is going to be, I mean, if it's 55-plus, all right, well, then you've got people that are working, right? So they're going to be adding traffic. If they're seniors, then you don't, who's going to want to try and go up and down a hill in the middle of winter? I don't know a senior I know that wants to drive that. I mean, it's going to be very crazy. You're going to, I mean, you're going to come down the hill, either go into my yard, or you're going to go off into the woods, or whatever, because it's just, even though it's going to wind, it's still going to, on an icy day, it's going to be a disaster. And the snow removal, I assume it's going to come down and go right across my yard. You know, I don't know where else they're going to put it. I'm just going to plow it into the woods, which is going to be, it's going to be hectic. And I don't know if you know Mountain Road, but when you come around that, there's a corner there, you can't see around the corner. So if this car's coming, you've got to kind of inch out, inch out, inch out, inch out, and then go. So if you've got cars trying to come in up and down that new street, that's going to be a pain on top of the traffic and everything else. So it's, I just don't see, plus with all the ledge that has to be, the blasting and stuff, it's going to cause a lot of damage on the houses in the neighborhood. So I just, I just don't see it as a good fit in that area. It's a nice, quiet neighborhood, and it just doesn't make sense for that, something like that. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. All right, let's go ahead and turn to the folks online. I know that gentleman on the blue shirt has his hand up first, so let's go to him.
For folks online, will you come off mute? And please tell your name, your address, any town affiliation you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Matt Gaines. I'm an attorney with the law firm Amarcus Arico at Martin Brooks. And I represent the abutting, existing Windview Heights condominium. I actually just really had one question for Attorney Murphy, and I see, obviously, that the access is now coming off of Mountain Road, which my client obviously is pleased about. But I was wondering about the utilities. I know originally, under the first application from a year ago, the plan was to tap into the utilities at the existing Windview Heights and come in that way. Is that still the plan, or would the utilities now also be brought up for Mountain Road with that new S-curve easement?
I haven't seen all the survey, all the engineering yet met. My understanding is that some of them are coming up off of Mountain Road. I don't know that they all are. That will certainly, I'm sure, be part of the discussion at the next phase, assuming we get-
Okay.
I believe the water's coming up off of Mountain Road, but I just don't know all those details yet.
Okay, obviously, that'll be part of the application of the ZVA, so we can flush that out more then, I guess.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a couple more hands up. I can't see names, so-
I just took one.
All right, whoever, Lynn, just asked to come off mute, please identify yourself.
Her name is Diane.
Diane?
Hello, my name is Diane Downs. I live at 12 Richardson Road. My property extends on the disputed Richardson Road extension easement, to which Mr. Murphy's client does not have a permit, does not have access to that easement. I want to make sure that this new project isn't going to have a back door, that people who buy these condos will be illegally accessing my property.
There won't be an extension of Richardson Road.
There's not going to be a back way for them to go through the existing condos and go across my easement illegally?
There won't be, there won't be access from existing condos into the site.
We'll find, need a second, any rings out of that site, commercial building? Let's hold questions until we can be on mic and we can come up and talk. I want to have a whole mixed conversation happening. I'd also like to remind everyone again, zoning conversations need to be happening at the ZVA. If we have larger concerns that you want this board to hear, please raise them to us. I'm giving you all three minutes plus to do that. But when we start getting into specifics, that is not where this board is playing. Just, you know, keep that delineation. I understand that folks are concerned and frustrated and all kinds of things. Understand that, but I also want to keep us on track for what this board's goal is, okay? Lynn, let's go ahead and take-
Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I have one concern from Google Maps. I can tell you guys have to cut down a lot of trees in order to build this project, so especially if it's on the top of the hill. Do you know how many trees are you planning to cut down? So I'm just wondering how that'd go along with our groundwater and the stormwater runoff, and also come to like a environment protection? I would assume that we want to preserve all the green space. So do you have a roughly, like, do you have an idea, like, how many trees you're thinking about to cut down?
No, at this point, no.
Okay, thank you.
Another hand over here as well. Mute, and then you guys identify yourselves.
Good evening, Select Board meeting and chairman. My name is Alfonso Liu. I live in 11 Richardson Road with my parents, they are 91 and 86. I live across the street from 12 Richardson Road. We were part of the first Windview development in there when they first started. I do understand and appreciate the Select Board of trying to approve what is right or wrong for the community. This part of 11 Richardson Road and 12 Richardson Road area is part of the community of Burlington. During all that time, when the Windview were doing those things, we had several concerns that that company never did, took care of that. I'm very concerned about all the residents that are living there in general. So I'm asking the board to consider what is right for the community of Burlington, because we are also part of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Liu. Anybody else online who'd like to say anything? Just go ahead and raise your hand, we can get unmuted. All right, while we're waiting, Mr. Casey, was there something else you wanted to ask? Mr. Casey, was there something else you wanted to ask? I know that we were, I want to give you the time, if you have another question you have for Mr. Murphy.
Fire department, I need a second, means a egress off of this site. You only have one road going up and down, once a 24-foot wide easement. Is that, is that going to suffice an emergency vehicle up that site? Going back to Diane Downs and Matt Gaines, is there going to be a second?
There is no plan, that's why I put that second one up. You can see there's no, there's no connection between the two. As part of the permitting process, fire department and all the other safety departments in town will have a chance to weigh in, in terms of any comments, conditions, concerns, or whatever. So I can't tell you, I won't ask something about that, but until we get to that point, I-
Should be a term.
Yeah. Absolutely. Mr. Sichler, I see your hand up. I know Lynn's going to get you off mute in a second here.
Can you hear me? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Eileen Sichler, Housing Partnership Vice Chair. So to Sherry Ellis's point, yeah, we, the Housing Partnership, hasn't had a chance to talk about this. The document was just emailed to us sort of blindly a week or two ago. And so I just think it would be worthwhile for everyone, for us, to be able to take a look at that, try to get some facts, and make an opinion. And likewise, to the Select Board, to understand what you're supporting. To another speaker's point, it would seem that you'd want to know more information about this. Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. I do want to point out that we are following the new processes set by Town Meeting, which, you know, I mean, everyone was notified, we're holding a public hearing, and we're going to wait a whole month, essentially, and then we're going to re-discuss and vote. So compared to what was before, this is now insanely more transparent than we've ever been. So if folks haven't had a chance to digest this information, I don't know what to tell you. I mean-
We're all on the same page now. So, I mean, I'm trying my best to, like, make sure that we're all aware, but I mean, I don't know how much more time, I mean, Sherry, I see your hand up over there if you want to come up and say something.
Mr. Chair, can I just, one more thing?
Yeah.
And I think that's great, and, you know, I take your point, that's wonderful, that it's better than it was before, but we don't have all the facts, and you don't have all the facts about this. And so that's, you know, where I'm going with this.
Right, but, Eileen, I also, you know, like I clarified earlier, our role in this is also very finite. It is for a letter of support, whether or not, to go into the package, right? Like, we aren't, our vote could be a no, and the state could still say, yeah, go ahead.
Understood.
So, I mean, like, but again, I'm not trying to be dismissive of our role in this process, right? I understand that we are the Select Board, and that our vote does carry weight to it. But I also want to acknowledge that there is an entire process that needs to occur through the ZVA that has yet to even begin. Now, that's being dismissive of everything that's come before with the prior submission, but I'm focusing on what is happening from now moving forward, right? So I just want to state that as a point of clarification. Sherry, since you want to come down and say something?
Thank you. Appreciate the second bit. And I echo Eileen's comments. I fully appreciate this public process, and one question was, is will you keep the public hearing open until your next meeting, so that if there is someone else that wants to comment, or who hasn't heard about it and wants to comment, if they can do that? That would be one question. The second reason for my asking of the application, if it was the same, and I briefly mentioned, things have changed. In that application, one of the reasons, or one of the many reasons that the board supported this was, you know, public transportation in the area. Beeline, the beeline doesn't exist anymore. So things have changed that, you know, and the different access. It's a very different project than what was presented three years ago. So as much as you have the information, I think the information should be updated to the state. I don't know if the state understood that the project is very different from the access than what was before. We don't know if the utilities, I know that this board- We don't know if the utilities, I know that this board doesn't cover all of that, but you need to be aware of all of that information because does all of that information that's changed, does it affect this project and does it affect your support of it, whether or not this is a proper location? I think that's more of your, you know, support of this. Is this the right location for a more dense housing in a residential area? And you need to have at least a basic understanding of what is part of that application. If the application's changed, I think it should be revised and updated. So, thank you.
Absolutely. I also want to note that we have town council here, so I'm not speaking, she would stop me by now if I was saying something completely wrong. And all thanks to me and my big mouth.
It may be beneficial to us if our town council explained exactly what you're trying to explain. Coming from town council that this is, yes, this is our board, we have to make these decisions, but that's why we brought her in.
That's a fair point.
She can sit here and tell us exactly what's going on, which she's done in the past for different projects going on. And she sits right there, give her a second to, to explain to the residents and the members instead of sitting out there right now.
Yep. Lisa, I'll throw it to you.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I guess I would reiterate some of the things that you said in that in a LIP application, local initiative project application, it is an application that's a friendly 40B because it has the support of the town, namely the Board of Selectmen. And sometimes under the state local housing partnership, also the local housing partnership of the community. And that's what makes it a local initiative application. You can do those whether you're under or over 10%, it doesn't matter. And so it is actually your application, even though it's prepared by the applicant. You're actually signing as, because it's a local project. And so I think to Ms. Ellis's point, you would want it to be updated, even though the HCD is telling the applicant that it is the same project. It is, except for the access is different and the information is old. So because it's your name on it, you would want the information updated. But you aren't getting into the nitty gritty, as you said. That is the decision of the zoning board of appeals to do all of that review. But is this a good project for the town's needs generally in location, assuming all of the details can be worked out? And that's really the, that's really where you're going with it. So, and to your further point, this, this process that you're undertaking right now is not required by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, wasn't required in 2019, has been required for the purpose of, of the bylaw that was passed last year or earlier this year. And so the point, I believe, of that bylaw is to have some more transparency around it. It also has a more condensed timeframe because if this application were a unfriendly 40B, you would actually only have 30 days to respond, to provide a, a comment letter to MHFA. And so this is a little bit different because it's not that time crunch. It, you know, you're on, it's your own project in cooperation with the applicant. So if there were things that you needed tweaked or whatever, you can certainly ask for that. But by and large, that's exactly right, what you said.
Thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Chair. Thank you. Anybody else? I'm, I'm in favor of keeping the public hearing open through the ninth. I, I see no issue with that. More folks can come and talk and then we can discuss and, and, you know, decide at that point. You know, but if anybody else.
Mr. Chair, can I just, I would like to raise one point, and I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think that if you intend to close the public hearing or leave it open until the ninth, the problem is the bylaw says you can't vote the same day you close the public hearing. So that's, it has to be at a subsequent meeting. The bylaw says that Board of Selectmen shall take a vote, which is not the same date as the public hearing. So I would be, I would say that that's a problem if, if you're worried about that date.
Sure.
In that case.
Okay, Paul?
Mr. Chairman, could we ask the applicant if the second Select Board meeting in January works for a vote?
As opposed to maintaining an open public hearing?
Open the public hearing till the next meeting, close it on the ninth and then.
And then.
Vote on the following.
Vote at the following.
When is our, when is our second meeting? We haven't voted on that yet, but when is it supposed to be?
If your vote goes through, it would be the 23rd.
Okay, so Mr. Murphy, to you and the applicant, is, is January 23rd viable?
Sure.
We maintain the public hearing through the ninth?
We're happy to accommodate the town as far as that's goes. It clearly has taken a lot longer than anticipated, an extra couple of weeks is not going to.
All right, well, we appreciate the flexibility. All right, well then with that, let's go ahead and keep the public hearing open.
Do we need to make a motion to keep it open? Continue.
No, I'm going to vote to continue.
You're just going to continue it, not close it?
Yeah, so we're going to vote to continue it.
All right.
And then we'll, we'll take up further comments.
I'm going to make a motion to continue the public hearing till January 9th, 2023.
Do we have to do an on or after 6:30?
On or after 6.
On or after 6.
On or after 6, okay. And we had a second for Joe. All right.
Mr. Chair, may I just add, you might want to ask the local housing partnership to provide their comments prior to January 9th.
Yes, we will make sure that emails go out to everybody to get any final comments at that, at that ninth meeting. Mr. Espoio?
Chair, can I just ask a couple of questions?
If they're pertaining to the motion, yes.
Okay.
Otherwise.
I'll wait till the ninth.
Okay. So we have the motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. 500 to continue the public hearing. Okay, so just, I'm going to say it now, but then we'll go ahead and email all boards and committees again. If you have further comments, please email us. You know, come to the meeting on the ninth, call us, whatever it is you feel comfortable doing. Let's go ahead and collect every and all final thoughts and we'll see you back here on the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Murphy, thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and move on to 705, something a little, a little lighter in, in subject matter. We have some discussion, Q and A government restructure stuff. So I'll, I'll give folks a minute to clear up because we have some. Yeah, I know. Tell me about it. Yeah, no, I, I have it here too. Thank you, Joe. So at our last strategic planning meeting, we discussed the, the results from the original government, what was it called?
Thank you.
The Government Review Committee. And how one of the several outcomes from that final report was the only one taken up, which was the, the move and the subsequent vote by the town to move the treasurer collector position from elected to appointed. And that, you know, there's a lot more in that, in that report that is worth undertaking. And that, you know, I think that we're kind of reaching a point where, you know, we've got a multitude of committees and boards and there are things, and I feel as though like every, every time we're together, we have, I, I say at the end of the meeting, you know, that we need volunteers, right? And I think that one of the ways that we can look at finding more volunteers is maybe to find less committees. Which, which sounds like an insane proposal because I want things to be as fair and open and democratic as possible, but, you know, I think that it warrants some discussion. So we thought we'd open some time tonight to have that discussion. Town Council is here to make sure that, you know, we don't talk crazy, we can ask her questions about how we can maybe consider a couple of things. Paul, is there anything you want to add to what I'm blabbing about?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think town council is prepared to, to talk about a couple of different options to proceed. And I think procedurally, that was one of the questions we had from strategic planning, sort of if the board wanted to consider changes to the structure, you know, what would the process be? And I think if maybe we could start with that, maybe that'll answer some questions right up front and, you know, give the board a, a foundation from which to work with on future questions.
That sounds great. Lisa, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I want to thank Amy who has provided me some historical information, some of which I've read and some of which I haven't, but it's helpful in this whole process because I will be reading it, depending on how you all choose to go forward eventually. But the question really is, you know, what, what can you do if you want to change your government and what kind of process you can go through? I'm going to do a little background, so government, the charter for Burlington, which had a charter, was in 1790, right? So Amy gave me that document today. It really didn't say anything other than you'll run the town like other towns in Massachusetts. That was basically, that was the outline of your government, right? And so you had a town meeting form of government, which came out of that. And then in 1970, you adopted by special act, the representative town meeting form of government. And I go to those two things because those are essentially the two ways that you can change your government significantly. You can change it either by a charter commission and create a new charter or change to charter, if you will. Or you can do the same thing by special act, and they both require two different processes. Or you can, for smaller things, create what they call a town government study committee, which is kind of what it sounds like you did before. And those are things like, do we combine the treasurer collector position, take it out of elected to appointed? Do you create a finance department? Do you consolidate all of your inspectional, inspectional services? Those are less, less government oriented and more functional, right? As opposed to how do you pass laws in the town, right? Who runs the town? So if you're going to change the legislative body, for example, or if you're going to give more powers to the chief executive officer, or if you are going to change the terms of the chief elected officials, you must do that either through a charter change and charter commission or a special act. Okay? So under a charter commission, you actually have to elect a charter commission of nine members and ask the residents, do you want to change the charter? And essentially you put those on the ballot at the same time. Do you want to look at amending or creating a charter? And if so, do you want to elect these people to do that at the same time? And then they have a period from 10 to 18 months to actually hold public hearings. You're required to give them funding to have their meetings, required to give them meeting space. And they then hold public hearings, make a report to the board, and they come up with a charter proposal, which is voted on by the voters at large. Okay? Simple majority, voters at large. Alternatively, you can do it through special act, which is what happened in 1970. And what the special act is, just kind of what you do today. You petition the legislature, but first you have to put the special act together. In that instance, the special act has to be adopted by town meeting and then go to the legislature. And sometimes the special act is so significantly changed from what you do, that the legislature say, yes, we'll approve this special act, but we wanted to go back out to the voters and have the voters approve it too. That happened in 1970 and it happens oftentimes across the Commonwealth when you adopt special act charters. And so either way, you could do it through a charter commission or through a special act. Oftentimes when people are starting the process, they set, they set up a committee, the Board of Selectmen set up a committee or a study committee and says, if we were going to change, what kind of changes are we looking at and, and what would that be? So that you don't just all of a sudden throw on the ballot that you want to have, you know, a charter change, right? People have some kind of idea that, that where they want to go. So those are essentially the three structures. And the more significant changes, the legislative body, the term of the chief executive, chief elected officials, the term of the, the powers of the town administrator, town manager, those will have to go through a charter change or a special act. Otherwise you're tweaking things around the middle with a government study committee. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Gentlemen, questions, comments, thoughts?
Yeah, sure, thank you. I was, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was on that original Government Review Committee. Ultimately what shook out of it was the treasurer collector position. However, there were a number of areas that were identified by the committee that would, committee felt would warrant further, further review, felt there was a lot of duplicity in some areas of town government departments and so on and so forth. So I, I would certainly support reconstituting a similar committee, whatever the composition might be. You may want to have a little further discussion on the composition of the group, but I, I, you know, I, I think there's still some work to be done and I would support moving forward with, with this idea.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else?
I'd like to echo some select and running's thoughts. I think sometimes it feels like our government is very fractionalized and I'd like to see anything we can do to make it more efficient or more effective. I would be all in favor of, so I would love to maybe re-institute that committee or some type of committee or even a, a third party to take a look at how we do things and if there are ways we can do things better. Thanks.
To your point earlier about volunteers and committees and duplicity, there are numerous committees that seem to work toward the same goal, that maybe we could look at not just government level, but maybe some of the committees that, you know, may, maybe two committees could merge into one or something like that. I, I would have to study that, I'm just throwing that out there, but it looks like there is some overlap. And I think maybe that's one way of resolving the volunteer issue and maybe streamlining it at the same time.
Joe, any then? Okay.
Lisa, Lisa.
I, I want to add something, so just to give you an idea. So I had, I had a town about 10 years ago, this is, I know it really well, but I didn't represent it at the time. They had an executive secretary and a three-member Select Board, Board of Selectmen. Lots of elected positions, very diverse, like very, you know, spread out power. And they did a special act after they had a study committee. And they did this special act and it was a representative town meeting. And it really, it created a town administrator and consolidated in the special act, even though they call it the town, in this instance, the town administrator special act. It really consolidated a lot of the authority in the town administrator because at the time, the, all of the Select Board members were kind of operating off on their own and then the committees were operating off on their own. And they, they were, they were losing money and there was just no control. And so it was very clear in that act, who reported to who, who appointed who, and what committees would, were responsible for what, you know, what the subject matter. And so it, as you look through your special act and through your bylaws, you'll see, for example, town meeting has a number of committees that they've appointed that do certain things. And then under the general laws and under the rest of the bylaws, there are other committees that do maybe similar things to your point. And so no matter what happens, whether it's a, a general, a, the town government committee or a special act, you got to work together with town meeting to kind of figure out where things are duplicated and kind of consolidate them together. So I want, it's possible to do that as you look through the whole thing and do it through a special act as opposed to a charter commission. And I think that it's been done a number of times before for that very reason. And in that instance, they had somebody from the outside come in and say, you know, this, these people are doing the same thing that these people are doing and you're doing it twice and you're saying different things, right? So it would be better for the community to do it this way to be more efficient and effective.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Well, I think this is more of an ongoing conversation than, than anything, right? We're not going to be making any decisions this evening. But what I'd like to propose to the board is that we get the Government Review Report and take a look at it and a look at the recommendations. I think that that can be a foundation for how we decide what a charge for perhaps a new committee might be. I don't want to say that that's absolutely what, what it is, but you know, I think we should continue further discussing, you know, what we think might need to shift and then, you know, is it something that the Government Review Committee can do? Do we need to go bigger than that? You know? Or, you know, can we, can we stay focused on a, on a reconstitute committee with a, maybe a more focused charge as a representative?
It's a great idea, man.
So we can, we can put that on as a, as a continued item for, for the ninth. Okay. Anything else? I'm going to go ahead and shimmy on to something relatively painless, which should be 706, the 2023 Select Board Meeting Dates. This list was provided in our backup as a list of dates. For, 706, sorry, I'm off one here. For next year's meetings. So we've got. So, we've got a couple of meetings in January, February, March, April, May. It looks like, as we meet once in July, once in August. Looks like three of our meetings will overlap with town meeting, so in case there's any votes we need to take care of. And then, it gets a little weird in October because of the holiday, and then again, we have our one meeting in December. So, pretty standard, but any questions or comments in this, gentlemen? Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No? This is pretty straightforward. All right.
Make a motion to approve the 2023 meeting calendar, meeting schedule?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain. 5-0-0 to approve our 23 calendar. All right, moving along to 707. We've got our annual license renewals. This was wonderful lists, put together by Luna's staff. Thank you very much. We have been notified of some businesses that are not in full order in terms of paperwork. And so, I would ask that as we move through the lists here, we're going to wind up making, making a whole bunch of votes, really. What, 1, 2, 3, 4?
You can take all, except for livery class 2 and victualers.
Okay, all right. So then, if, gentlemen, you're comfortable with taking the list in its entirety, are there no questions? And I'll pause for questions or comments. What we'd be looking to do is take the list in full, but hold those three. So, any questions, comments on any of the licenses presented to us? Seems like the majority of folks are in good standing and supplied their paperwork and are all caught up on stuff, which is great.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, we're setting aside livery, victualers, and auto class 2. And we'll vote to approve the remaining classes of license unless there's any questions.
Gentlemen, any questions on anything sans those three items?
Oh, I can make a motion. I make a motion to approve all alcohol, amusement, auto class 1, cafeteria, entertainment, inholder, theater, and ware licenses for 2023.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain. 5-0-0. And that leaves us with livery, victualers, and auto class 2. So, it looks like, let's take them one at a time. Let's take livery first. It looks like...
He's the only one in that.
Are they the only livery? Oh, are they the only ones these are the categories?
No, he's the only one in the livery, but the other one, yeah.
I don't know why I didn't catch that before. All right, so in livery, we have, we have Burlington Taxi, which is not caught up on their paperwork. So, I think at least it would be my individual's. Jim, you have something?
Well, I have an idea for a motion.
Go ahead, I'll let you...
I make a motion to approve Burlington Taxi, the livery category, contingent upon completion of all needed documents, paperwork, and items by December 31st, 2022.
That would be great, Mr. Chairman. That'll allow us, if the paperwork's submitted by December 31st, we'll be able to issue the license, so.
Okay. All right, very good. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain. All right, that's 5-0-0 for that. Moving on to class 2. So, we only have one in this category that did not submit the missing paperwork. So, I guess we'll take two votes on this?
Yes, please.
All right, so, I'll understand a first motion to take everything but suite rides.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain. 5-0-0. So then, I believe we can allow suite rides to have the same contingent motion as we did for...
Do I make, let me just keep going?
Go ahead, Jim, yeah, take it away.
I make a motion to approve suite rides, class 2 auto license, auto class 2 license, contingent upon the receipt of all paperwork and requirements due by December 31st, 2022.
Second.
Okay, motion been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain. 5-0-0. All right, and then last up, we have the victulars category. Let's go ahead and take everything but Potbelly Sandwich Shop.
Make a motion to approve all the licenses for the victulars, except for the Potbelly Sandwich Shop.
So, I could, motion been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain. 5-0-0 for that. And then, Jim, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Potbelly Sandwich Shop contingent upon them submitting all needed documents, paperwork, any outstanding requirements by December 31st, 2022.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain. 5-0-0. All right, that gives those three folks the opportunity to catch up before the year is out. If not, then licenses will unfortunately lapse. Okay, moving on. We've got warrant article approval, 708.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The deadline, the final deadline for the upcoming January town meeting was this past Friday, December 9th. So, we do believe that we have a final listing of the articles that will be moving forward. What we're asking the board to do tonight is to take a vote to add these on to the warrant. You will have an opportunity to vote on individual warrant articles at your meeting in January, and we will present them to you at that time. But this is the vote that we use to prepare the warrant.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions, comments, concerns about the list of indexed articles?
I make a motion to approve the index of articles for the January 23rd, 2023 meeting as presented.
Okay, motion been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain. 5-0-0. All right, next up, we've got 709, discussion on electronic sign. And this is another fun topic. We've got a night full of fun topics tonight. This one is the Select Board and our, I don't know why I can't talk anymore tonight. I finally reached my max, Joe. Congratulations.
Oh, because you had to shut up.
So, the Select Board had proposed replacing the, if you want to call it a current sign stand, the two posts out there on the common with an electronic sign. We had Town Council draft up an initial zoning bylaw amendment, which was then circulated around, which we then got feedback on through ZBRC. We met with Planning Board last, was it last Thursday? Right, or?
Can't watch, sorry.
Last Thursday. Land Use was there, ZBRC was there. We'll be doing the ZBRC meeting on this coming Wednesday, two days from now, the 14th. Tonight, I wanted us to just check the box on a few things and continue the discussion here, because there's a lot to do between now and town meeting in January. The first and foremost, because it's an amendment, zoning bylaw amendment, is based on the draft language that's been submitted. So, Town Council had it, ZBRC made comments, Town Council revised. There's been some grammatical changes, which I don't think we have any issue with, but I wanted to confirm and affirm with the board that everyone has seen and is comfortable with the most recent adjustments, which essentially outlines the fact that we're going to have the one electronic and the one current Town of Burlington sign just on the common, and that we're not, you know, because originally, it was drafted for, like every municipal property, which wasn't what we were going for, but it was a placeholder. So, comments, questions, any concerns about updated language, anything of that like? Okay. I figured, because Town Council had circulated to us, and we all had a chance to review it, so that's great. Couple of things we need to discuss. So, we need to, tonight, it might be the only vote that we need to take on this, but we need to set up a design advisory committee, so that as we move from now to town meeting, you know, we work with the signage folks that Paul's been talking to, you know, to work toward a design to present to town meeting, or as close as possible. I think it can still be, you know, malleable, but we want to have something as close to possible as what we hope to see there. With that being said, I think that, you know, the hope was to include, you know, someone from Planning Board, someone from ZBRC. So, I wanted to discuss the makeup tonight with you gents and, you know, put this advisory board together. That way, as we move into Wednesday and further, we can get everyone appointed and have, I think the goal was to have hopefully maybe two meetings, you know, with the designer to provide, you know, some options for us between now and town meeting. So, thoughts on this? Joe?
I'd like to be in the committee.
Great.
Being on the ZBA for six years, I think I, you know, got an idea what sign should be.
I like it. Okay. So, in terms of makeup, I appreciate Joe volunteering. You know, I think, are we thinking two, two from us, two from Planning, two from ZBRC as an advisory board, back to us as a six-member board, which then, you know, Paul would help facilitate with the design team? Do we feel comfortable with that?
Should we have any staff, like from rec, or maybe police, because of safety issues?
In terms of the design of the sign?
Well, I'm thinking just maybe keep them, let's keep them in the process.
Sure, yeah.
Because they may have some sign issues, I mean, safety issues or concerns, and the rec department uses the common a lot.
That's a, that's a great point. So, I think in fairness to staff, we should make sure that we circulate the proposed design changes out to staff, so that they have an opportunity to weigh in. But I think that in terms of, like, keeping the body to a certain size...
I think, sorry. Go ahead. No, you got it. I personally think that no matter how many people you put on this committee, no one's going to agree. There's going to be a lot of discussion. I don't like that brick. I don't like this brick. I don't like that height. I don't like that color. I don't like that sign. I don't like it. So, my personal opinion is the less people on the board come to the Board of Selectmen, this is what we chose, everyone agrees with it, you go from there. Me and Mike dealt with that the last time. We put up a sign this time on town property that we ended up getting extra amount of dollars a month for for perpetuity. So, this is going to be the same type of thing. I don't think that there's going to be a group of people that can sit down and say, I like this, and all agree on it.
That's fair.
It's my opinion.
I think, yeah, I think, you know, sign, sign design's a tricky thing. I think that we have, you know, the overlay at least to go off.
If you get one from everybody, and then just go from there?
Thoughts on that from everybody?
I might be all involved with this, though.
If you want to go to, go to.
I think Nick did a great job last Thursday presenting it from the planning board. I think there was some give and take up there. And I think it would be wise to have a blended subcommittee. The number, I kind of agree with Joe, sometimes gets, the more you have, the less... Agreement you have. I'm going to, I think five's a good number. Maybe not six, but I don't want to talk at one thing. I honestly don't, I really don't, doesn't really matter. I'm not that hung up on it, but...
Yeah, I think it's important to remember, too, that, you know, this is, this is in concept. And I think that if we had one, even two decent designs to show at town meeting, because again, town meeting's voting on the amendment itself, not on the design. But I think they're going to want to see and hear some stuff in that presentation. So, I think that, you know, to your point, while we could probably, you know, circle all day on, you know, the font and the size and the color and everything else, you know, if it's, if it's on concept as opposed to the exact, you know, at least at this juncture, take us to presentation, that's also sufficient.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Maybe this subcommittee could, you know, even through Google Earth, find examples of other signs, message boards, that's what I prefer to call it, a message board. Message boards to see, you know, just to bring to these meetings and say, oh, we'd like this, we don't like this. Or places you know, go there and take a photo of it, and bring all that together, too.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's fair. I think it's, you know, we should, we should try and do that in those design review meetings, right? And that way, whatever's going to town meeting is an amalgamation of things that exist, but things that we hold for.
Right.
But yes, I agree, and that's warranted. Mike, anything you want to add?
I kind of see Joe's point about too many quick spoils in the, you know, the brew, but I also like a diversity of ideas, so I can see both sides to it. It's a tough one on how big you want to have it, but I would like a good diversity, good mix of ideas to kind of mix it up and get the very best solution.
Yeah, absolutely. Amy?
I would like to make a comment about giving a message board.
Come on up.
Is it good time?
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about it, so...
The message board, yeah. There's a message board.
I just, pardon me. I didn't want to interrupt before my time. I just really would like to say that the signage is something that's very important for getting out the word for things like elections or early voting, voter registration, or returning your census, those types of things. And I have probably overstepped in terms of putting up banner or making banners, but I like making banners. So, I would very much like to see a more professional electronic-type sign that would be something that's easier for whoever is maintaining it to be able to kind of make easy changes and up-to-date changes, and I think it would be a really advantageous thing. And we've got a nice common, and it's got a nice place that it could go, where, again, probably, I would think somewhere about 60 to 80% of our traffic through Burlington goes through that intersection, so.
We put Amy on the committee.
I'm just really in support of it.
Who would use it a lot. You want to be on the committee? I mean, talk about someone who would have maximum usage of that thing.
Yeah, but I mean, you know...
Kind of commanding town meeting.
Right, yeah.
Plus, I mean, we're through to the conflict.
I'd be glad to give my two cents in, but I...
Please do. Please give your input to the committee.
Yeah, I think right now I got a full plate. And 2024 is coming. I know I've mentioned it twice already tonight. 2024 is coming, and it will be four elections and a full plate. So, I don't need another thing to, but I would definitely like to see something like that, and would definitely use it.
Thank you for the support, Amy. We appreciate it. I think, I think moving forward, Amy, to be fair, though, we'll always assume that you have a full plate, and you have to tell us when you don't, because I know that you are, you and your staff are infinitely busy.
We just need a bigger plate.
Right, yeah. Careful what you wish for, right? Okay, so then, let's, let's talk about makeup of the committee, not our faces. So, who wants to see two, two, and two?
I'm okay with two, two, two. I mean, Joe, I understand your point, but Mike, your point as well, but I think if you did two, two, and one, that board with one representative would feel slighted. And I think if you did one, one, and one, it's a lot to put on just three people.
Sure.
I'm okay with two, two, and two.
Okay. Joe and Mike are one, one, and one. Mike, any opinion one way or the other?
Oh, really?
I know.
I'm fine either way.
Yeah, that's... Sherry, you're ZBRC, come up and weigh in on this.
Thank you. As much as I appreciate having ZBRC on that committee, I think it's very important. I don't think we need two people on there from ZBRC, so I'm willing to give you back one if you want to. I fully appreciate Jim's comment about the police being on there. This is a critical location for pedestrian crossing, and that corner is, you know, when the banner's up there, you can't see pedestrians crossing if you're in the car, you know, on Bedford Street. So, I think it's really, I don't know if they need to be on the committee, but certainly, as you said, keeping the police and safety and pedestrians of that corner, because they cross a lot. So, I'm happy with one person on that committee, so you only need one of our opinions.
Much appreciated. Yeah, Jim?
I was thinking ZBA is the only board of appeals, so maybe one from ZBRC and one from ZBA?
ZBA is a better one.
Hang on. Two, two Select Boards concerned, two Planning Board, one ZBRC, and then either we leave it at five, or we can have a one and one. I see a hand up, Mr. DeBonner, and we'll get you off mute in a second here.
He's on the committee. He's a sign guy.
Three persons a half.
He's on ZBA, isn't he?
We're not going to answer. We'll just leave his hand up. Put yourself to the talk.
Put him back on here. Go ahead, Jim.
Am I on mute? Can I, I don't even know what's going on. I'm on ZBA and I'm on ZBRC. I'm the representative on there. I didn't know if you guys needed me or not, but I'll throw my hand in if you need me.
Well, I mean, thank you, Jeff, we appreciate it. I don't know, Sherry, from a ZBRC perspective, would it benefit having him serving in both capacities?
I would think the chair and the chair should be the chair.
Make the determination.
Should be represented, so. And I'll talk to ZBRC on Wednesday about the question.
Whatever he wants to decide. I know Charles is on the subcommittee, too. So.
Okay.
Whatever works.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
Yep, thank you.
So, we have the possibility of keeping ZBA as a, as a sixth seat?
Move the question.
Cheeky, you are cheeky. There's no question to move.
I get the decision then, one or the other.
All right, so then, well, I, I mean, I can't put the...
Throw some of their stupid sticks.
All right, so...
I say, make a motion, you keep your, keep your six, committee at six.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. The design committee, the two members of the select board, two members of the planning board, one member of the board of appeals, and one member of ZBRC.
Okay, motion been made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, five zero zero. All right, that gets our makeup together for the committee. The, the, the charge of which is to work on the design of the sign.
Opposed.
Nothing more, exactly. We're, we're looking to get a good design, and really, a concept design. I think it's important to keep it high level, so there's an opportunity for, for flexibility after, after town meeting, if necessary, as we get into things. Okay, then, something else we need to discuss is possible draft policy. So, while I don't think anything will be ironed out before town meeting, what I'd like us to discuss between now and town meeting is the draft policy. So, Paul, I'm going to flip it to you for a second.
Sure. No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've requested the town council provide us with a draft policy from best practices from other communities. I've also was able to track down a policy in use by the town of Tewksbury, which also has an electronic sign similar to what the board is considering. So, I can forward those along to you before the end of the week, and I'll check with town, follow up with town council as to when we may have that draft policy. And we'll try to at least have a draft in place for the January 9th meeting.
Okay, great. And then, too, at Jerry and I, you know, I think we showed the list of the current users.
Yep, we have that, we can forward that, forward that by email as well.
Okay, excellent. All right, anything else on this particular topic? All right, very good. All right, moving on to minutes, we've got nine.
Motion to approve all minutes.
Just take them in one lump?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think we can do that, right? Just take them all?
Second.
Because, I mean, assuming that there was no, there's nothing on. All right, motion's been made and seconded to approve quite literally all the minutes that were given to us. Please see our agenda and back up for a little bit.
I read them.
Well, I read them too, don't get me wrong, there was nothing wrong, I saw.
Nothing wrong.
So, we got, we got a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, five zero zero to approve a boatload of minutes. All right, subcommittee reports going around the table. Jim, what do you guys have?
I got a quick one from the fire department. Let's see, I'll actually abbreviate it. Burlington Fire Department was awarded a firefighter safety equipment grant for $14,900. The grant was approved by the Executive Office of Public Safety and the Department of Fire Services. Also, a reminder, because it's holiday season, a lot of people use candles, don't leave candles unattended, and put all candles out prior to going to bed, and also ensure that you have functioning smoke detectors throughout your house when using candles. And one more quick thing, Lynn, I meant to say earlier, I forgot, the way you laid out those, the licenses, that was fantastic. That was so, that made our job so much easier. Forgot to say that earlier.
We all clapping? No, it's all right.
Not taking credit, that's...
Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I did see a news report recently, our, our former planning director had won her race for state representative by one vote in her community.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, one vote. I don't know.
After recon.
Wow.
So, congratulations to Kristen. I want to thank Lynn and the rest of our staff for organizing the annual town holiday recognition day, for lack of a better term. It was no easy task, given most of the function halls that we typically use in the past were...
Not functioning.
Not, just simply not functioning. And so, you did a heck of a job, Lynn, putting that together and finding seats for everybody to sit down and this kind of stuff. Secondly, kudos, once again, recreation department, tree lighting on the common, there was, I don't know, it looked like thousands of people.
It was unbelievable.
When I went by, they did an outstanding job. Nice, nice, nice job to them, and they do it year in and year out. And finally, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to my colleagues and to everyone at home, because I don't think we get together again until the new year.
Correct.
Correct. There you have it.
All right. Thank you. Joe?
Oh, I know.
Mike?
Oh, I also wanted to echo what Slickman Runyon just said. Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone, and Happy New Year. This is our last meeting of the year.
That takes the chairman's report. I just want to acknowledge how insane the year has been, coming off of a two-year pandemic, and all of the efforts of this board, and every board in town. I think it's worthwhile to take that moment, acknowledge it, acknowledge the efforts of our staff as we head to the holiday season. You know, we have, we had some, some great acknowledgements, some recognitions earlier tonight. It means a lot, you know, to, to be able to, to recognize folks who commit so much of themselves to the community. With that, get out and volunteer if you can, because you know that's my shtick, and I'm going to say it every time I'm here. But for nothing else, have a wonderful, safe, happy holiday season, and we'll see you in 2023. Paul?
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn? Seconded. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, five zero zero. Good night, everybody.